Morning, everybody. I hereby call the Studio Parkville, South Carolina Work Session of Tuesday, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Um, to kick us off, um, can also woman, language please, communication, follow the pledge.
Let us pray. Most holy, everlasting Father, thou art God, and God alone. Father, we thank you for all the mercies and all the grace that you have shown to us personally and for this city of Hartsville. We are your humble servants and stewards that have the task with the job of making Hartsville a better city for all of its residents in every section and in every way that we possibly can. And though we thank you now for their son Jesus, who came home on the cross, was dead and buried, went to the grave, stayed three days, came back up with the victory of hell and death, and then ascended unto the right hand of the Father. And Father, we own the finished works of Jesus Christ. We proclaim to be your children, and we ask you to give us the knowledge, the wisdom that we need so Hartsville can go forward and go forward and be one unified city. Father, we ask all these persons in the name of their son, Jesus Christ, to be blessed, okay?
Amen.
Let the light shine through the skies of America and to the Republic of America's second. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Teresa, I tried to call you. Can I just, is that a premonition you made?
Uh, I won't think so much.
No, don't let me.
I'm careful.
Yeah, I'm gonna be very careful.
Because of all those things that we not associate on, so.
Looking forward to seeing, seeing where you end up. Anyway, uh, let's move right on to the actual business. Uh, we have a guest, Dr. DeRitter, if you would, uh, come forward and let us know what you're working on.
Sure.
Um, just to state your name and address for the record, situation? If you would, just for the record, state your name and address.
Yes. Don't be intimidated, it's okay. Um, I'm not sure I've heard my Paul Parker's, but, um, my, uh, name is Antonio DeRitter, out of the five, twelve, eight McNair Avenue, uh, Hartsville, South Carolina. And so, um, I am the chairperson of the Hartsville Parks Committee. And we had recently, uh, voted in our last meeting to change, uh, to request that City Council change, um, the wording of the law, uh, section two, three, seven, six of the city's, uh, laws that defines us, um, to change us from the Parks Committee to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Um, and I, as I understand it, have been invited, uh, to present to the council today in that, uh, regard. So, uh, in terms of why we would ask for such a change, so we, you know, sent to, uh, council a version of, uh, the law with all the changes in red. Um, and actually, one small change in addition, which is marked on the copy that you got there, um, that creates the future of, I wasn't sure actually if everything needed to be in the law itself. Um, but in addition, after that, in the, um, handout that I printed out and brought with me today, so just to sort of break down, you know, the reasons why we, uh, decided this. Points one and two are basically just pointing out that the Parks Committee or the, uh, Parks Recreation Department has its own, you know, plans for how to spend its funds and what to build and, and what to, uh, improve or repair or remove from the parks. And generally speaking, the Parks Committee is not, uh, look to, to tell the Parks Recreation Department how to do that stuff. On the other hand, so in terms of, you know, capital construction projects, we don't have that much power, uh, to direct that. On the other hand, if people are on the Parks Committee, do you have access to a lot of volunteers, a lot of equipment, a lot of facilities, for activities and programming? So, we are, well, we're better set up in a lot of ways to be an activities and programming kind of, um, group rather than a facilities, construction advisory group in terms of the, um, parks themselves. On the other hand, um, in point number three, as you see, currently the way we're defined, we only have authority to talk about or make recommendations about things that are happening literally inside the, uh, parks of the city of Hartsville and nothing else. Um, and as I went on to elaborate in point number four there, a lot of what's going on in the city, uh, recreationally and sports-wise is not happening inside the parks. So this is happening at schools and churches, recreational centers like YMCA, but also other, other places, um, and other kinds of private property, and especially on the streets and on the sidewalks, uh, of our town. So for the committee members to be able to make, have any kind of discussion of or make any kind of recommendations about any of those things, uh, we would have to change, uh, the law defining what our scope is to allow us to talk about things happening outside the boundaries of, um, the parks. And, uh, stop me any time, by the way, if you have any questions about these individual points and us. Um, as far as the fifth point, so right, just going into more detail on the fact that people who are walking, running, cycling, who are using wheelchairs and scooters and other, uh, forms of assisted, uh, transportation, um, the best thing they can do to improve facilities for those activities is to give SCDOT the information that it needs about the different things that need to be changed, added, removed, uh, repaired, et cetera. And SCDOT, as we found out recently talking to, um, Joey Skipper, who's the district engineer, they actually really welcome this kind of input, um, because they would like to know, uh, and they don't have specific personnel to go out and gather that kind of data for non-automotive transportation needs in local communities. Um, they just don't have the resources for that. Um, so, um, they want it, but it's not, uh, anybody's particular job right now to gather it and deliver it. So we'd like to help the city do that if we can. Um, in the sixth point, this is a little long, but basically, you know, we went on a trip, uh, that the governor's school funded entirely, um, the students and I, uh, this last summer, to go to places that had really good, uh, cycling infrastructure and figure out what's it like and how do people get it built and how do they maintain it? And the thing that we really took away from that is that there are these, uh, well-organized cycling advocacy groups that work directly with City Council in each town where we went, uh, to help them identify places where they need to build something new or repair something, et cetera. And the City Councils actually really depend on them for this. Um, and as I've, uh, identified here, like, in the Dutch speaking, there's this group called the Fietzers Vondens and the GAC, the GRACQ is the same thing where we, where we speak French. But in the US, we have the League of American Bicycles, but it's not, it's not as well-organized or as strong as something like the Fietzers Vondens or the GAC, like, uh, there's not even a paid volunteer for the League of American Bicycles for the state of South Carolina, for instance. Um, so, um, and given that, and given that we don't have a separate group to address transportation infrastructure needs for walkers or joggers or people using, uh, wheelchairs and all of that, um, we figured we might as well put one citizens group together that can advise City Council about the needs of such people, so non-automotive, uh, transportation infrastructure needs, um, and to help them make this request to SCDOT. Uh, not that we would necessarily do that ourselves, to have other parties that would prefer actually, like, directly, you know, click the button and really send it into DOT, I can understand that too. Um, but, uh, however much help the city would, would like. Um, one of our students suggested that we form such an advisory group, uh, to gather data and to make those kind of recommendations for the city. And in meeting with the mayor and the city manager, uh, they both suggested to him that we should put this kind of advisory group as a subcommittee under the Parks Committee. But the Parks Committee, as it's currently constituted, couldn't do any such thing as that because we're not supposed to be talking about stuff outside the parks. So that also would be a reason to, um, alter the, uh, definition of our group, getting down towards the end. So, and, and most generally, uh, as I've put here in point number seven, um, recreation and transportation have been treated as separate issues in a lot of city planning, especially in the, towards the end of the century. Um, and they're not really, and this has left us with, uh, an infrastructure that really encourages people to drive, discourages people from walking, from biking, uh, and using other forms of transit. And even when we have trails for cycling or for jogging, we expect people generally to drive to get to them. Um, and people, um, a lot more people than just me have been interested for a long time in building a network of transportation, of, um, trails and protected paths whereby people could get to the various parks in the city of Hartsville without using a car. Um, and of course, that has to do with infrastructure that's outside the parks, not the inside. Um, so the stuff is, uh, strictly speaking, inside the park boundaries, can't really help with that. So broadening the scope, uh, of our committee and making it essential, Parks and Recreation Committee should help us, um, to acknowledge the fact that recreation and transportation are directly linked and to help the city government plan, uh, a town that, as I put here, is safer. So, uh, safer for, actually for drivers and for users of other forms of transportation. Help dear, um, there is real established evidence to show that helping people to use active forms of transit leads to better public health outcomes, cleaner because you have less, um, air pollution, of course, and more vibrant in the sense that, um, you see a lot of stimulation of economic activity with people being encouraged to use forms other than cars, so getting themselves around. They tend to spend a lot more money on local businesses, um, which is part of the reason why, um, people have been so successful with things like the smart garage share and green bill and why people are kind of looking at that as a model to, to emulate. Um, and lastly, I actually just added this in, uh, a little bit later this morning, uh, but I realized, yeah, in terms of pop-up infrastructure, so when you're thinking about putting in a new, um, bike lane or a new, uh, structure of some kind, uh, one of the best and cheapest ways to test it and make sure that it actually could work and that people like it, um, is to put it in a temporary form using, uh, just cones, planters, things like that, you can easily move around. And our committee, the Parks Committee, we can help to coordinate stuff like that if, if we were authorized to make recommendations about things happening outside the boundaries of the parks, although we can't as we're currently constituted. Um, so, this is all of the reasons for this was popping into my head. Do y'all have questions?
No, I think it's a reasonable recommendation to expand the city, uh, the Parks Committee because as you pointed out, there's so much goes on outside physical boundaries of parks in Hartsville. We need to encourage as much of that as we can, as safely as we can. The benefits are obvious on that.
When you talk about biking, you have what's known as the Patrick Solly, um, bike trail. And I'm not exactly sure of the, the route, but, um, I was in Charleston back in twenty nineteen. And they had bicycles at the hospital, and they were called Holy Spokes. So I said, okay, well, we could have bicycles and we could name them Heart Wheels and make hearts and flames coming out, so for heart health and everything, for exercise.
Yeah.
So if we made them Heart Wheels, um, that was the idea that I had at the time. But like I said, I don't know the, uh, trail of the Patrick Solly bike path, so, um, that, is that something that we could possibly coordinate?
Um, yes, stuff like this, exactly, is the, the kind of thing that we would be very interested in helping with, but that we could only do if we're, if we're working on stuff beyond just the borders of the parks.
Yeah.
Would that be a separate ad hoc committee?
What he's referring to?
Yes.
In terms of the, the advisory group that our student had, uh, had proposed to identify infrastructure needs? So you guys probably know more than I would actually, but what was it exactly that you were recommending to Michael that we do with it? Like, is it called an ad hoc committee or, I don't know, if it's a subcommittee that comes out of Parks and Rec, what is that?
I, I didn't, uh, if I was to be first, I didn't really consider that. We, we were talking about how, if we were to pursue something like this, how to make it sustainable. Pointed out that if it was a formal body created by law by the city, then the city administration would maintain it year after year after year. But that takes time and effort and laws and yada yada. Now, the alternative I was telling Michael was you could just have a group of passionate citizens that get together on their own time and do this and then come to City Council to present. But same building is really, really hard when that one champion moves away. It all too often, a, a project or a, um, an effort falls apart. So without the, the, um, kind of the formal structure, you're, you're at risk of that. And then Daniel had the idea, what if we just folded this in with some of the other, um, recommendations you're making as we, you know, re-envision the, the Parks and Rec Committee? So that we don't have to go through all the formalities of creating, creating and maintaining another body. You've already got a body, you're just assigning, um, new interests and responsibilities to it. And if the Parks Committee wanted to make it part of your general agenda, if you wanted a subcommittee, I think that would largely go to the Parks Committee. Um, if I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure how the ordinance is working on that, but it seems like it'd be pretty simple.
Okay.
Um, I had another point, I've, I've talked too much and lost it, which is probably the best.
Was that, does that kind of answer your question, isn't it?
Yeah, um, just for example, we had, um, in the Garden Mount Committee at one point. And we worked with codes enforcement and I worked personally with the codes enforcement officer and the building official that sat, who was the same person, um, to help him gather information he needed, you know, and help keep track of things that he may not see that I effectively kept watching, kept watching so I can let him know what was going on.
So it's, yeah, similar situation in terms of they needed the data, so somebody could actually get it.
Exactly. Um, and, and that wasn't ad hoc committee. Um, so, I, like I said, I, I don't know if we actually would need an ad hoc committee, but like the mayor said, with you all being a personal group and bringing that information to us, um, is there any way that you could add a member to the Parks Committee?
So just amend all the departments that was in the group.
Um, and then if that might be possible?
And, and I'll be saying, um, principally to make it six people instead of five, but you mean to put somebody who's on City Council on the...
Because we've, we've got the A on, I think, uh, at least Bobby, aren't we? So, you know, not to start arguing aside, and, and, and I would hope if the scope, um, doesn't span that, that the Parks and Recreation Committee could be the squeaky wheel. Teresa mentioned the Patrick Solly bike trail. Well, I know where it is, but it's not very well walked, right? And it does loop around and go down Sixth Street.
Yes.
And goes up home and goes out to Calvia and, but, but it's not very well marked, right? I know one sign that it's on.
I know two of them spot there.
Okay, you know, and, and so, you know, those type things, just regular maintenance issues that the committee could bring to the attention of City Council. And, and most of our walking trails or walking areas in the city are either sidewalks or the paved asphalt going down, um, Carolina. But with sidewalks, as we found out, you know, they get, um, uneven. And most of those are responsible to SCDOT, which you could help be the squeaky wheel to bring those things to their attention. Even involving governor's school kids and maybe GPS and where these areas are and using technology and things, you know, to keep a database. And maybe the city does that, I don't know, it, it, it's gonna be redundant or not, but I think that would be, uh, something that we would have the information and if DOT came down and said, we need, we need to fix some sidewalks, these are the, the number one problem we've got there. And I think Daniel pointed out to me in texts recently that do a pretty good job in the downtown area, but we've got sidewalks, other places do, and, and I realize we've got areas that, that need sidewalks, that don't have it, but, uh, you know, but we need to maintain or get DOT to maintain what we got. People walking, jogging, and there are so many people out early in the morning, as Bobby knows, um, you know, if they're unfamiliar with the street or something, they're tripping, oh, it's, it's...
There's a gentleman that rides, um, I, I don't know, but it looks like an elliptical, uh, thing down Washington Street. And he rides, um, actually on the sidewalk. But what I was thinking about, Dr. DeRitter, you'll be here. Is there anybody else that is a permanent, um, you know, assistant that's going to be here?
Well, everybody actually on the, um, on the committee has been really good about, um, regularly attending, um, and so if that's what you mean, I mean, there's, you know.
Well, what I was thinking, if we could increase that more from five to seven, you're gonna be here. And if there was another person that was going to be here, then you all would be able to be on that committee with the changes that you, um, brought up. And then that way, you know, you all champion parks and recreation.
Yes, sir.
And then go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna kind of, so I guess we're, we're talking about, uh, what the change the Parks Committee and we're also talking about a little submitted, so just kind of speaking of it from, from the staff's angle, logistically, how we would do it. So that's, that's kind of what we're getting at. So you do have in front of you, um, this is from Michael, uh, one of your students. And, um, again, these, these guys are amazing, these guys at GAVLS who kind of speak to us. And I really love this, second or third time to interview with them, um, and Casey joined me for this last one. Um, and one of the comments we made is that this is something that we handle, we have a lot. Um, so student-led initiatives for most part. For instance, we have one at the Coker University about recycling right now. The problem we have with it is that every single year a new crop comes in and they say, we want to do this. And then the administration of like either entity goes, well, who's gonna maintain it? And then falls onto the agency or the, you know, so. Our recommendation to Michael was, because this was an excellent idea, I mean, basically, it was a lot of what you're talking about here. Um, obviously you talked about, and, um, his idea was to kind of look at it, you know, from a infrastructure standpoint. So this, this proposal in front of you is largely infrastructure-based, so he went through, you know, one of the things that we noted that was really kind of interesting, we never thought of, thought of in the last second to last page, is him trying to go through that roundabout parking or the sidewalk and his bike pedal hitting the thing because it's too deep. That's something that it's ADA compliant, it does have everything, so DOT engineered it well, but didn't even take a look at, you know, bike turning, potentially hitting their, you know, their, so that was something that was just a, that you noticed. And part of the thing I really liked about the recommendation from this group was if you go to the second, the last, or the second, the line, the second page, I'll be part of it. I don't know if jumping around. Had several different members across the community. So it was, it looked to me, this was almost an expansion of the Parks Rec, uh, Parks Committee, the Parks Recovery Committee, um, including a Coker University student, a, you know, a governor's school student. Um, they, he did have your YMCA student. So what we were explaining to him is that, as the mayor said, if the city were to do it, that would help with longevity. Um, now, my concern though is getting two groups that do the exact same thing. Um, and also doing two groups that are telling a particular individual department what to do, because we don't have that for the rest of the city. Um, you know, the other ones that are regulated by law, planning commission, for instance, does tell, does work with the planning department, but that's by city law. So our suggestion was, that's why I wanted you guys to see this, was if you were talking about expanding Parks and Recreation Committee or Parks Committee to a Parks and Recreation Committee, potentially look at, um, this is, I feel like Michael's approach is very holistic for the city. Um, I think it does, it needs to be flushed out a little bit more, um, I think, although not much, because it's very, well, I think it's very well written, exactly as I was going to say, it's with yours. Um, I would just like to explore potentially combining these, just for our sake of making sure that logistically we can keep this thing going. Um, and if you're gonna be expanding out, I would include the recreation component, but don't make it a subset of the Parks and Recreation, potentially make it more a Parks and Infrastructure Committee or something like that, that can really address more holistically across the city. And don't put, I don't want it to be channeled through the Parks Committee. I'd rather it be channeled almost directly to me than you guys, as opposed to going through departments. Or maybe we put in my, you know, public services director as an engineer would understand those things, you know, so. The idea is just if we could maybe look at it from a, I'd rather not really go onto the, leave it so hard on the park side. But what you're talking about is a lot of stuff that could fall outside of the Parks and Recreation, even though it is recreation-related. You're talking infrastructure improvements, you're talking about, um, you know, walkability stuff, and that's, Parks and Recreation is also tourism, it's also, so it hits a lot more than just recreation. So I just wanted to bring that up, I thought that both points were, you know, really well taken. I just want to make sure that you understand that if we're creating groups, it is gonna be more for us to manage and more people to appoint and more people to keep track of it. But it just makes more sense for us to combine it potentially. Yeah, that's basically, um, what, what we were saying too, that, you know, in order to, to do that, and, and we can see all the reasons why you would, to simplify it, so then, right, like we would, that was one of, one of the reasons, becomes one of the reasons to, uh, to change our, the outer script.
Uh, how many would you want to comment on your opinion of parks?
Well, the only thing is, if you've been to a Parks Committee, right now, we have about the most dedicated group that I've seen. I think you mentioned, everybody's at every meeting just about, and they, they've been, they, they want to do something. It's very hard, you got a group of citizens, you know, that wants to do something. You ought to let them run with that.
This is, it just seems like a very natural expansion of what has been a facility only created for years for people who are saying, I want to be involved. And it's back to your point, I think committee will change from time to time. That, that's okay, I mean, that's just a natural progression, I mean, there will always be a chairperson, you can use what, you know. But they, they want to be the eyes and ears to look beyond the facilities and just say, here's some other ways that we can expand recreation and our parks here, and just, just think about it in all its sense, I think it makes good, good sense. And it doesn't cost us that, um, the group of people that can make recommendations, not do anything, they're not trying to overstep boundaries, they're gonna say, give us the ability to at least come to your recommendations right now, they don't have that capacity. Seems like a period of time.
Makes sense. All right, well, um, any other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And, uh, for coming to share with us, keep it up.
Yep.
Oh, I was gonna say, uh, I don't know how long ago it was, but at some point, when Adley was here, the city put something out to encourage people to submit work orders to DOT. And within a few days, DOT called us and said, what is going on? Why are we getting so many of these things? We're getting flooded, and we told them, well, we encourage people to use your tool, and they said, well, stop. Stop doing that.
Every, every thing is wrong.
Yeah, not, not to make too much fun of, uh, SCDOT, but, um...
No, I think that's the thing, is that they, they want people to give them this kind of input, but in the absence of any organized group, just trying to do it, you know, in some kind of more coherent way, you just kind of hear from whoever, like somebody who notices something broken in front of their house, and so, you know, that's, that's who gets it.
But important note for the record, there is a website that you can go to SCDOT and submit a work for this location. Um, so I would encourage people to use that.
We have.
Both internally and internally. And I think he probably uses it more than all of us combined.
He does his own special lobbying. So can I, just to be clear, so then what exactly are you asking for us to provide to you? What would you like to do, what would you like to see this happen? You want to expand out parks, would you like us to present an idea of what would that look like?
Yeah, yeah, it, it, I, I would say to further explore this and figure out what those boundaries are so it doesn't get too big, um, or, or, or overstepping responsibilities of other, whether it's the department or other committees or, or whatever.
Well, acting as an advisor, I'm not really too concerned about overstepping, just as an advisory committee. I just want to know what, what exactly, so we have the comments from, we do have the recommended from the internal...
Yeah, I wouldn't, wouldn't mind that being a work to the council at some point, okay, to, to expand if any have it.
Yes.
It did, that was a scope of it.
Just to build it in two hours or something, stuff to do.
Well, that's what brings us out of yours.
Okay. So it's gonna take two weeks of work, so. Um, so looking at Dr. DeRitter's suggestions, would you like me to incorporate any of Michael's?
I don't even, I wouldn't, but I don't think you'd like me to.
Michael is one of his students, and as he said in his comments here, he came and spoke to Casey and I. And so you have to, for you here, what he presented.
But just y'all, I'm just seeing this one.
Right, this was for explaining to you. So he suggested, as we said, to expand it out a little bit more with some other members to the committee. So I just want to know, do you want me to incorporate any of these things into the group? Or do you want to look at this because we've been talking about it? We just need some, I know if you want to just present this, that is one thing, but this is also some other things.
How about if you go with just what Dr. DeRitter has done, we, we used that as the jumping...
How about to hear with just what Dr. Ritter has done, we, we used that as the jumping ground, wanted to expand. They are, sure, I'm getting too complicated. They're what, that, get the ball rolling.
So Dr. Ritter, his group would be advised with?
Well, they would advise, but there's still the facilities committee, there's still the Parks and Recreation. But they, they could come to us with things that their eyes have seen, and just, just simply, just for recommendations to us and advice. Gives them that ability that they don't have, where they're only supposed to be inside the walls.
Right. Would they bring down the house?
And, um, there was a, we had a attachment via email with, there was more redlining. I remember specifically, there was a, a change to, change council man, council person to.
Oh.
Like, is that still?
Correct, yeah, there, there are, yeah, that's still in there. Those, those changes are still in what you're holding in your hand. So yeah, there are a couple of points that are not to do with changing the scope, that are just councilman versus, or like chairman versus chairperson. And then the name of the department that works with us, because they, the current law uses an old name that really doesn't exist anymore.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was still part of the.
Yeah, correct, yeah, those changes are still there.
And Mr. Ritter, there's a part of the city code in the very beginning that says everything, that says age, and man, all that, that everything is considered a big gender neutral.
Yeah.
It's all the first part of the city code, lots of all that drew out, it's not been changed over the years. Because it wouldn't be just head position.
Oh, yes, the whole, the whole tongue.
So that's how the code from cooperation to that, just to gender neutral, state look in for a part of that.
Right, that is a good point, I forget about that in there.
Anything else on this, or a little bit on the mayor's update? All right, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Uh, several things for you guys, we are in budget season and business license season. And we've got frequent meetings, directors, not right now, so we have one at Fire, we have one at National League Cities. Things going on, so I'll give you guys a way, that's all that's going on. But exciting news, today, we actually have twenty-three new businesses that have started in the city of Hartsville, and we are going through. And that does include some contractors, so we do understand that. But there are some, you know, brick and boards that are starting in the city. Uh, we are nearing the end of business license season for us, I believe it's the end of, and Brad is in a meeting. Who said April, May is when we're looking at? The situation with the current specific customer that we've been going, that is still ongoing, but we're hopefully reaching resolution for that very quickly, which we're very excited about. Did you, you have a question? Other exciting news is that Neptune Island is in full swing for hiring. I believe that today we have about a hundred seventy-one new hires, so we look to hire about two hundred, two twenty. City staff has been doing this, so two job fairs with tremendous success. At the job fair, we interview them, place them, drug test them, and offer the same thing. So it's a one-stop shop, and it's a full team effort at T V Thomas. Last time, last past, there were sixty-six applicants, almost every single one was hired. So it's really good, we have, I think, one or two more players.
Yeah, we have two more job fairs coming up, and then we have lifeguard training coming as well.
Yeah, and we're on doing lifeguard training as we're going.
It's a lot, and I will commend, you know, all the staff on that, including HR, they're working six days a week.
Yeah.
So, um, they're already, and, and HR cannot thank them enough. The whole team comes out and really helps push through, so that we don't have to, I don't know, you know, because getting a hold of teenagers is not the easiest. So we're able to go ahead and get it all done on Saturday, instead of texting, calling, Facebook, whatever we can do to get a hold of them, we get it all done that day. So, um, they're doing a great job, and also the Neptune Island staff, they're all there too on Saturdays. So it's a really cool setup, and it's working well for them.
And also our, you know, staff from the tourism initiative there as well.
Yeah.
We're getting very good with Snapchat, it's very good, and the TikTok.
No, you can't use TikTok.
Can't use Tik.
I think we're using content.
Feeding reels.
Reels, yeah.
That's right, we did use reels.
We like to really exploit sport factors and social.
Yeah, you know, in the process, do we discuss with the students, they're drop dead as far as when they can help, like when they go off to college, or, or got something else? Because it, it seems like we're strong when we're strong, and then when we fizzle, we fizzle. Yeah, that's when we scramble.
We do, we do have the, and the main thing, we're really trying to help us overhire some more positions, because really the issue at the end of the, end of the day is that kids do leave, there is a attrition process with this. Uh, these are not, for the most part, not, they're not looking for a long-term career, although we have hired staff from it to work for the city, which we're very excited about. But the main thing is that we don't want to overburden the staff that are there, and they're overexhausted now. We'll start out with maybe, you know, eighty to a hundred lifeguards, and then it does go down to about twenty-five, and that's just naturally, as we get. The school schedule is helping out though with that.
That's right.
Because it's getting more condensed as we go. I mean, our first operating, our first season had ninety-six operating days, or eighty-something?
Yeah, now we've gone seventy-six.
Seventy-six operating days.
Yeah.
But that can, that actually helps us, because it's June, July, which is our peak months, and that's when everyone's here.
Yeah.
So it helps with the kids, they don't go back to college, they go back to college, but they're still working for a school time, so.
So that's why the hiring right now is so important. So this big push we're making, we went back to the job fair this year about it, that's why we brought back job fairs. We're doing a big push. Um, Michelle and them have done a great job with the marketing, and they've added on to that all heart radio. I've got multiple text messages from people, saying they heard on the radio, they want more details. Uh, so that has been the difference this year from last year. We, we definitely weren't as close to it, so we're overhiring especially, because we do lose them throughout the summer, especially towards the end of the summer. Uh, one thing though, because of that school schedule that he alluded to, is we're able to open up seven days. We'll have seven days going on in May this year, about last weekend, May, this never happened. Um, by far, we have the biggest attendance in May and June. People are ready for summer, they're excited, they're not going on summer vacations yet. So to have that timeframe, I was nervous about the modified year round, which actually really helped us out. It's worked out really, really well for us, and we'll be weekends only in August like usual. So get through June and July, overhire like we are now, we're hopeful for this season, it won't be as, as much of a struggle as last year.
What's your first day?
Our first day will be, we have season pass holder day on May, I don't want to say it wrong, is it Saturday? And it's always the weekend after Mother's Day, because I'm not gonna do that to a mom. Um, it is on May twentieth, that's season pass holder day. And then May twenty-first is our first open day in public. Um, that's weekend only, because they're still in school, so I have them staffed. And then we go to full weeks, starting May twenty-seventh, that Saturday, seven days a week.
And some other good things that are helping, so Cochrane is, is encouraging kids to stay for summer this year, so it's a big help. Uh, and so we're, we're pushing out weeks that we're advertising different ways, we're trying different things, hopefully we're gonna keep them going, that retention.
Yes, the first summer Cochrane has outlawed, um, they have housing this summer on campus, so that's really good for us.
That's good for the town, which I don't.
I thought so, yeah.
All right.
So, um, you said that would be two hundred to two twenty?
That's how many we plan to hire.
So we're at one seventy, and we have two more job fairs to go. And we are hiring in between those job fairs, we're just, we're just very successful so far, the kids come out for it. And the fact that we get them onboard that same day, it works out great.
Hartsville Medical helps us out, they come out and do the techs orders on the side, so that's really good.
But that's really good for a teenager.
Absolutely.
That first job for a teenager, because it lets them be out versus being in fast food.
Sure.
They're, they're out in a different environment, and it's recreation, and it's, it's fun.
Absolutely.
And so they're there. Um, our problems have been the weather, which we have no control over. And then the shortage of lifeguards, which is all, um, major.
It's, and one thing that we did do this year, uh, because with the lifeguard shortage, is we've actually added more chairs. Uh, that is something that's really helpful for them with the heat. So we've actually added, we're adding more positions, but we're adding more chairs on the river to try to assist with that, because it is in the heat. I did, I worked with Tower last year, when we got to that point, it was extremely difficult in the sun, and it's one of the hardest things I've done. So, um, tried to do something to accommodate.
No longer in the water.
That's right.
Sometimes the water can be a little frigid.
Yeah.
Now for, you know, a kid playing in it, it's, they don't care. But for a lifeguard who's sitting in there for about, you know, thirty minutes or so, before they can rotate out, it was kind of problematic for us. So we're changing around, so we're adapting. We're changing, this is the sixth season again for municipal home to work. And it is very exciting, and we're continuing to succeed. Um, really, I don't think it's a lot, but just kind of, the stickers back against us, so we're working over well, and the staff's done trying to stop keeping it up to date.
And that would, that would give them a better ability to, um, you know, change, not somebody be there for two hours, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
They, they, in the intervals.
We're very excited about the changes, and our new gentleman Andrew Aaron is doing an exceptional job. Uh, so we're very excited about all those changes. So, you know, to go back to the point, we treat the kids, I mean, this is their job.
Yeah.
We treat, we treat them like adults. Um, they respond to it, respond really well to it, and we offer them the chances to, you know, grow. Um, it's a really amazing thing, and we're able to do that for two hundred kids every summer, something along that, and nothing else in the area does that, so.
Sounds like we're on our way to another award for Neptune.
We definitely pushing for it.
That's right.
We gotta push out of that Florida thing to happen.
Billboards, billboards.
We do billboards, yeah, we're really pushing. Now, we did start to shout away from some of those Augusta folks, because I'm from Augusta, so we gotta say, I'm just kidding. Uh, no, we, we promote all the way out to Charlotte.
That's right.
And so we are, we are really good, and like I said, the radio really is working out, so it's working out.
And it's a shift, we're usually in Columbia, but we are focusing more toward Charlotte.
Yeah.
We got so much last year, um, with traffic here, it's actually is a quick of a drive for some people there to come here. Uh, we started to see a boost there, so Michelle and them have been working, we're kind of, we're switching it up, some of pushing more towards one rather than Charlotte this year.
And we actually did really, really well, because there are weeks we don't want, I know.
I live there, but we're way back on the way.
I'm glad.
I'm glad we're building our own.
Surfside players.
Flywater.
We're needing chairs, I got plenty of them.
I've been trying, I can't get a hold of them.
I'm pretty sure everyone in the country calls, let's call it, for chairs.
I've been trying to get them.
Yeah, but we, like I said, we're, we're trying to expand and keep things going, so. Um, another thing that's coming up, if there's some more questions about that, um, this year, we're bringing back the Great American Cleanup. Um, so, uh, this is a staff-led initiative, they came to us and said, listen, and I, since I've been here, we haven't done one. Uh, Sunoco did partner with us for a cleanup last year on Earth Day. It looks like this year, we're actually going to combine both events. So April twenty-first, we're gonna do a cleanup, it's still T V D to where we're gonna be going down. Um, actually, DOT is doing the litter cleanup program that we're helping participate in, where we notify them of the streets, and they're actually contracting out the cleanup streets throughout the city. Uh, so we, hopefully, we won't have too much work to do, but I know we're gonna be going through, doing some things. Uh, I know staff will be out there, will be doing the same thing we did last time. Uh, going down the streets, we'll have trucks going down, we'll pick up the bags, and it won't be left out. Uh, but April twenty-first, we're gonna do Great American Cleanup, so we're very excited about doing that again.
Um, on the Great American Cleanup.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way for us to have citizens, well, to inform citizens?
Yes, yeah.
What it does, because I normally work, and I would work with Sunco Avenue from the Ninth Street ditch back up to the one, um, I think it's the One Hundred Rock. And by the time I go back home, then people in Two Hundred, Three Hundred, Four Hundred Rock have put things out.
Right.
After we just cleaned up.
Gotcha.
So it's, um, we need to explain.
Okay.
That, that is not a day for all your trash from behind the house and elsewhere to come out.
We are, we are tied to Earth Day, so people really responded to that last time, they saw what we were doing. And we didn't have a lot of that last time, uh, but I think when we do, do, make sure we, we'll publicize this, this is not gonna put it out on the current day. Uh, we'll take care of that way, be a little bit of that.
Yeah, so we're, we're plagued, and South Hartsville has a lot of tires.
Yeah.
And tires can take them to, um, be disposed of free.
Every, really.
Four, four tires per licensed driver. So you get three bodies, then you got twelve tires you can get rid of.
Right, right.
But it's the fact that the people, a lot of times, they don't know.
Right.
So they don't know, so they just toss it in, in the ditch, which, you know, causes a big problem. Or they put them on a vacant lot, and, and it just, it causes problems for the community, then it turns into a dumping ground.
Absolutely, and we hope that, you know, as we, with this yard waste change, we actually notice we have more time, and are able to help take care of some of this. So hopefully with the changes that will be over, the different plate of the ordinance, we can put those things out with the trash, we pick them up, it's no longer charged.
Those are brown goods.
The brown goods, now tires and stuff, that is just an education thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
The tires, um, and also the appliance.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, yeah, there's, there's ways to handle all these things.
Yes. All right.
April twenty-first, what's your start time?
We, we're, everything's still being determined right now, we'll have that shortly. We were just making sure Sunoco was onboard with them, they were doing.
Still kickoff at pride?
It depends, last time we started at the old gas station on Carolina, in Six, which is no longer there. Uh, so if we, we're gonna determine if we're gonna go down.
Listen out for details.
Listen out for details, that should be, it's forthcoming, uh, we'll be there shortly with the information, we just wanted to know now. Again, we were, we were going to do the Sunoco claim again, and it was brought to our attention, the Great American Cleanup was, we were interested in doing it. This was from citizens and staff, they came and talked to us. Um, so we decided to work on it and get it all combined, so it's still coming up, but we'll have all together.
We're gonna.
All right. I'll let you tell the time. Couple other things, um, two updates, one on wastewater treatment, treatment plant. So as you know, um, the wastewater treatment contract was bought out by Blackman, Blackman Web sold it to Clear Water Solutions. They sold it the day of, the contract was right after it was signed, he sold to the company. It's now come to, we're gonna put that back out for a bit, um, because the contract has been in place since nineteen eighty-five, I believe, um, which is as old as me, so it's time to look at it. And so we're gonna be putting that contract out, we hope to have a new vendor selected by budget season, and hopefully have some idea of what that, the cost will be, because it has gone up exponentially over the years. Just wanted to be aware, Clear Water Solutions could still be the one that gets it, but we already put it out as we're, you know, as required for current policies.
Because they do have, the old Blackman's got a great reputation, my understanding is we've had no issues, DEHIC issues.
We have had DEHIC issues lately, we, I mean, towards the end, I know we'll get into all the details.
Yeah.
It was a good, good move for us to move to, the Clear Water, Clear Water is a very large outfit.
Right.
Um, as we've noticed, with many municipal jobs, um, you know, wastewater technicians being one, with the amount of certain licenses required by that, a lot of those entities, just like a building official, is going to a contracted service. Uh, we're just noticing that trend happening, some of the more, you know, highly technical jobs are coming out. Uh, so Clear Water Solutions, we're very pleased with how they're able to respond to things, but the contract is still the nineteen eighty-five contract they bought, they maintained. We need to do a contract that makes sense to us, for you.
I'm okay with that.
Um, so if you want a contract close to forty years old, we need to take a look, I think it's good enough time for that. All right, any questions about it? I'll just keep you guys updated as we get, it's gonna be a few months, nine year process. Casey and I did meet with, as you know, the Garrison's place, uh, we did have some, you know, comments, or placed on Facebook about reclaiming this, and some of the features on that. Uh, we did meet with Garrison's mom, Miss Angela Johnson, and also, I don't remember who she was with.
Melissa Stokes. Physical therapist.
Shu May.
Shu May, that's it, from Children's, from Children.
Yes.
From National Idi.
Yes, so she was, she was there. Um, we are going through making corrections to, they should have, unfortunately, we did notice that one of the pylons, if you guys have been out there today or this weekend, we noticed that one of the pylons that was on the, above the zip line, the storms had separated from the footer that was in the concrete. So when Casey saw it, we noticed it was bleeding. Um, city crews responded, um, quickly, and were able to pull that out. We did have to cut one of the metals, uh, not support, one of the metal beams that's going to the, where it combines into the floor where the tarp is on. The tarp is off, and one of the beams is down. We have the company coming out Thursday to look at it, but if you have any questions, that's why the, the tarp is off and one of the beams is missing. Uh, because the, frankly, the water that's underneath that mulch had essentially rotted away or rusted away, the bolts fully took the footer. Um, so we were able to notice that, get it corrected, wrote it quickly. Uh, but it is gonna take some time, it might be a cost to get it fixed, it might be to the point where we have decided to want to keep that building on top of it or not. Uh, these things, the thing was, it weighed about four hundred pounds, that was being suspended by.
Do we have some sort of signage out there, like they do at amusement parks, like if you're above this height, you're not allowed, or we prefer you not play? I understand it's a public park.
Yeah.
But this is, just like a lot of times when I spend a lot of time out there, I don't mind going over there and telling the kids that are taller than myself. Say, look here, parks, this is, it's not designed for you to play on.
Right.
And they'll get upset, and they'll have choice words, but I'm okay with that, I've been married forty years, I've worked it out. But I'm just asking, yeah, that if we, if we have to help Adam, yeah, keep it, because there's a lot of destruction, personal property destruction going on out there, and anything, and this stuff's not cheap.
No, it's not, and I mean, we're looking to order a new ADA compliant swings, and those things are, um, at the last point when I was looking at them, they were up to a thousand to two thousand dollars for a true ADA compliance, compliant swing. And so it is expensive, um, and it's the first thing. And so it is expensive, um, and it's the first things are cattle, all the straps, the equipment that is separate, that you see on Garrison's place, that has the, the wheelchair, that is quite expensive. Um, and we're actually looking at, um, replacing that, because we need, it's surely is ADA. Uh, so the, the main purpose, the meeting with her, uh, was, with, uh, Miss Johnson was, it was good, it was bittersweet for her, of course, um. You know, the, the park itself is, it is, when something is damaged, it makes it difficult to keep it up. Still is excuse, we take full ownership, that we need to keep these things fixed, because the swing that's being stayed and stood on will break, especially one that's not designed to carry someone over twelve, twelve years old. Um, but, uh, the idea is that we want to make sure it was going forward, and we're gonna keep this thing updated. Um, and I mean, the park is, you know, it's, it was moved from that to now, it is needing, you know, parks need to be updated, so we'll, we'll do that too. So just want to keep you updated, if there's a, if you've noticed there's a pile, now that's why, we took it, they didn't say yet, no one took it.
Well, the maintenance due to usage, we don't have a problem with that at all, but the, the.
It's the destruction.
As you're called due to destruction.
Yeah.
I have a heart.
Use is okay, this use is not, right.
And I need to see too, with the cameras, you know, we talk about our big camera project we're doing, you know, if we have ones more, you know.
Focus on it.
Focus on it, that is something that, you know, we can, we can try to work with and try to see if it's, who are the vendors, or who is doing that, to be able to stop it, as you know, when something does get.
Just to return effect, too.
Yeah.
That's right, so with, with something, yes, and that is one thing she requested, to have the signs put out, that you're on camera, right, that was one thing. Um, she did say that when the news reaches back out, she commended us on it, and said, the only thing she would say is that we're working diligently to fix it. Um, so she was happy, and she was glad to see that the city crew came out immediately to take, literally while she was standing there.
On a Friday afternoon.
On a Friday afternoon, so thank you to Public Works, they came over with everything to get it taken out, it was not an easy deal.
Is there any signage out there, um, adaptive people only?
There, there is a sign underneath where Garrison's place, I'm not sure exactly if it says adaptive people only, the, the, the idea is, and that's where I think we're, you know, the park was, I don't know how.
Well, initially too, is that when it was just the zip line and the wheelchair, maybe we could have said that, right, when we did the addition to it though, it was supposed to be included for all, right? There are certain features that would be just for adaptive, right, uh, for that, but not all of it.
The idea, and I think going forward and how it has worked too, I mean, adaptive play structures have changed too.
Yeah.
It's all play.
Yeah.
It shouldn't, you should not have a difference to who can play on it, and that's the overall goal. And so, for instance, we're looking at including, you know, we have to do some money therapy, the Duke for us, to do something at Pride Park, the idea was to do something that was adaptive, that was for all playing. And so, um, if you look at any new parks going in, it's, the designs that you can't really tell the difference. Um, there, that's, I think the goal we needed to push it towards, is to make sure that there isn't a separate, because that's kind of what happened with the separate wheelchair play, it was only for kids in wheelchairs, and that's not fun for when you have a sibling. You know, so, um, we're looking at it, uh, I really opened our eyes to a lot of the newer things, uh, they were very, um, forthcoming with information, which is awesome, the Shumay was excellent resource, we're gonna continue to work with her. Um, and we just want to make sure that, um, the legacy of, um, Garrison is preserved. And so we were, you know, we were humbled to meet with her, frankly, and we're very pleased that she took the time out of her day to come, so we thought, I'm thanking her for that. Uh, but we're gonna, you know, do better, and continue to try and make this thing a, a better place, and make it better for all kids, so. Just want to give you an update, you, you will see that we are gonna be working out there in the next couple days, uh, repairing that pile, Pride Park, we'll, uh, compensate some new pipes to go up there, but we'll get there.
That would be good, because there is a gentleman, um, that comes to Pride Park, he's, he's a grown man.
Yes, ma'am.
And you go right by, and you see him.
He's from Charlotte.
He's almost the flipper swing.
I just love it, he used to be out at Garrison's there, I love it.
He is having a ball.
Exactly, you're right about.
So I got to meet him.
Yeah.
I don't know his name, but I got to dance with him. Oh my goodness, you're talking about dancing?
Yeah.
So he's grown, but there's, um, some type of disability or handicap there.
Sure.
But I understand not wanting to be treated any differently and being separate, you know, have to have it to be someplace where other people can't be.
Well, something that was mentioned on the Shumay, this, this might actually help us on the back end, because it, it was mentioning that we could design, or there's new equipment that actually is for adults and up.
Right.
That can, so when you have a, a quick piece of equipment to handle that.
Right.
Maybe that'll help us with some of the, I want, it needs to be robust.
Yes.
It has to be something that can support, you know, kids playing, because kids will find a way to break it anyway.
Yes.
But if we can figure out a way to, you know, make something that's supportive, that can handle it, but also help someone like that, because that's, that, that's, the park is there for him too. Um, you know, he, you know, people are of all ages, so.
Yeah.
It was, it was a very great conversation, um, I only hate the fact that I had to take down the pole at the end of the day, but it was, so.
Well, thanks, um, for, you know, getting on deck so quickly, and, you know, your response time.
Well, that is, my, the crews came out, and they were, so it was fantastic. It was done by five, they didn't actually have to do whatever it was, I'm, they were very pleased about it. Um, and lastly, just, uh, the two other updates, um, you do see a number of demolitions happening across city, we did put, there, those were near the end of those timelines, we put on all those things. In fact, the pod shop is coming down today or tomorrow, I see, uh, things in the back doing it, Six in the Bank on Fifth Street, or Six in Fifth Street came down last week. Also, the dilapidated structure on Sixth Street's coming down, I believe this week or next. So, uh, the new codes enforcement working with fire, we're diligently going through and taking care of these buildings, and they are clear to the ground, no footers, no, no padding is left. And then the structures will be, you know, remediated to make sure that there's no erosion control, things like that, so.
Just, just footprint or the entire?
No, anything that was on the structure that has to be demolished, those will take care of, now, if there's a driveway or things like that for residential, we are looking through that. The hope is that we can build a new house on top of that, uh, but next to it, not on top of it.
So at Sixth Street, is that the one that, the camp?
That was apartment. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That looks good, and that, as, you know, as we were talking through it, you know, I was talking to my codes for officer, you know, there's a, a person's having trouble, I said, you know, everyone's having trouble with these things, it's not exactly the best situation, but we have to be consistent with when we get these things down. So we are sending out formal notices, and they're going out, um, any structure, any building that's unsafe in the city hospital, we are going through that, assist the act of taking care of it. Okay, so if you see those things, that's the, the pod shop was a lengthy process, and that was another insurance issue, but we are gonna get it out.
It surprised me how big, much of a difference that little paint building, paint gone made, in a good way.
It really showed off our wonderful utilities back there.
Yeah, but it looks better than that building did.
It does, and we are actually working on, we're gonna, you know, some temporary screening while we're doing the N C A plan.
Yeah. Before you went to buy the cable TV in the eighties. I'm curious, I was always wondering what that was, I don't think it's, any, any example.
And what's the, what's the name of the, um, temple, it's out on one fifty-one, now, Cunell, it was Cunell?
That was.
Cunell, yeah.
Gotcha.
Good angle, um, back to the demolitions and everything, I do want to get with you, um, and maybe codes enforcement. Um, because other than fire, we do need to look at the, um, vacant structures that we have.
Yeah.
I see a for sale sign on one, and we have, we've been having problems with that. Um, if it is like an estate, they have to go through a lot of rigging, and. But if a body buys it, then he's responsible.
Absolutely.
And so what I want us to work on is having all those properties flagged.
Okay.
As condemned, and whoever take, buys it.
Their body, you're dead, bro.
They're responsible, and they have to bring that, um, written affidavit to the city.
Right.
Okay, they're going to, um, take care of that mileage.
That's exactly what we're, we're up to.
Thank you so much.
All right, and then lastly, um, we are working, we are still working through the process of the, um, the foreworking out of the search, uh, we're looking at, uh, we're gonna be paying off that loan, the. We ran into a situation where all the mortgages, because all the properties are individually mortgaged, we have to go through to closings on every property individually. Um, so we, we work with Florence, and we hired an attorney out of, I believe it's actually out of Columbia, um, and so John Deboz, he's working with us on getting that done, he's working as quickly as he can. Uh, but it has delayed, we do have a daily rate for the interest, so it is gonna cost a little more. Uh, again, you guys authorized us to pay on March fourteenth, and we are still going through the, um, sixty-day process with the, um, G O D. But just want you to know, we are looking to have this closed at the end of April, at the very least, uh, mid-April, fall, as well as that, but all this property individually mortgages, taking a little bit of, uh, uh, real estate, law, you know, strength to get this thing done, but we will.
And that's why Morris did bring him in, because it was very special at work, on what John Deboz is having to do, um, around that to get this done.
We did close it the first time when we bought it, didn't we? We did closures when we bought the property the first time.
So there was a mixture, so if you recall, so the city purchased, um, a million dollars worth of properties, the city did close on. So we have, the city owned those properties. Then when H P D C was formed to purchase the remainder of the properties, two million dollars were fired for fireway, all the mortgages from fire, from that loan, are in fire's name. So that, so we do own about half the properties outright, and those were transferred to H P D C, but there's no mortgage attached. The only properties we're talking about, and it was about, how many properties, twenty properties or so?
Some, some.
Um, that have mortgages on them still from fireway. So even though they're in H P D C's name, they still mortgage time to it from fireway, so that has to be part of closing. Um, so when we pay, basically, when we write the check, and we give them the, the big check, we're gonna put us a big check so we can.
So it's just a transfer?
It's just a transfer, it's essentially.
It's classified as closure or whatever.
Still classifies as, like, just like buying a house.
If, we could, you could pay, but it's ac, it's absolutely recommended from our attorneys, which I agree, do not pay until we have the closing done.
Yeah.
Um, that's our collateral, we pay that.
Just like on a house, you don't give them a check for the mortgage.
But they're going to stay combined, correct?
We are go, we will have, so they are combined from a T M S, um, purpose. Individually, they were kept separate, because if something were to happen, and you're gonna transfer some properties back and forth, we need to know which ones were which. So the parent T M S is still there, but overall, yes, it will be all combined into one full property, and then we will, when the city buys it all, we'll have the one property.
Right.
That's the goal. So we'll get, and then from that point, we'll be able to do whatever we want.
Okay.
So it's just one of the, the process has taken longer, we anticipated a March closing, but as they started digging through all the paperwork, they noticed that he has a team working on this right now. So the goal is to get this thing taken care of as quickly as possible, but again, uh, we would notify fireway, they gave us the daily rate, so we are paying some of the interest, but we're not paying a full quarter.
Yeah.
Coming up, so, and I think it's like two hundred and sixty-three dollars a day or something, extra interest.
Less than three hundred dollars.
Less than three hundred dollars a day, um, but that's on the clock, so that's, you know, that's money that we have, so we're working through it eventually. It's a lot, but that's all I have, any questions, any of this stuff? We're very busy, and budget, budget workshop, April twenty fifth, very excited about that.
That will be from now to at the addition, at the addition.
Say that again.
The budget workshop on the twenty fifth will be from now to at the addition.
Twenty fifth of, this month, for a first read in May, and a second read in June, when we have to have it done.
Would you mind updating the location?
Absolutely.
Because I will, hundred percent show up here.
Yeah, we just updated the location as well, for sure, too.
And we s, we switched, because we do, we did like the, how you, the scheme of the strategy planning session, we are, we kind of be on the same level, so.
Daniel, before we close, a couple of meetings, you know, your brainstorm about the property where we had the, um, marketplace torn down.
Right.
Maybe entertaining, uh, food trucks or whatever.
I have it written down to talk about.
Um, is it too late to make that happen in twenty twenty-three or what?
So, um, I wanted, I, I had it written down, I thought I was already skipping over it, um, we, we received substantial feedback on the food truck, um, I actually would, would really want to take some more time to really flush this out a little better. Um, a lot of feedback from the business owners in downtown, which ways we do, but I think it'd be really beneficial, I'd love to meet with, I'm gonna be meeting with several of them to talk about their input before we decide. And then I really, um, the feedback I got was they'd love to get your input to them as well. That's who was concerned the most about putting, even though it followed the ordinance, is putting something in the downtown area. Still, um, you know, like I said, I think it's a, food trucks are wonderful, um, but I do value and respect our, you know, our downtown businesses, I'd love to get their input, especially for someone who wants to be next to it. I wanted to talk to you guys about that, that we have looked at some locations, uh, but overall, we haven't picked one, so, so to speak. But I was, wanted to encourage you guys that we have received a lot of calls about the food trucks, not exactly all positive, um, so wanted you guys to be aware.
Well, you expected that.
I did, I did.
We have a word on that.
Centrally located, who knows, they may stop in.
Sure.
They may buy gas, they may do something different, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, it just seems like one behind roses, they do real well, it's kind of like it's off the beaten path.
Yeah.
And we're not fully.
And the one at Roses, so.
Yeah.
Plan Commission did just approve the horse, uh, Highway Fifty-Five, it's coming to that location. I honestly know if the owner, that's another person I want to talk to, if the owner's gonna not let them stay. If they stay, then all this might be for naught, because if they have a, you know, relatively easy set of an exit, and if food trucks are allowed to continue being there, they might not want to leave, um, because it's already established location. Um, so I wanted to speak to, I just want, we need a little more time, that's what we're doing now, if you guys want to push, you know, want us to push and do something, we absolutely can. But I, I just wanted to give you guys that feedback that I received, um, since the last meeting.
But they're responsible for business licenses regardless, they sit behind businesses or whatever.
And, and the fire marshal, and they have to be.
And they have to be, uh, so, uh, it's, for the sake, we, we maintain them, it's like a restaurant, it's just, there is that perception that, of course, that they are not a burning horse, they don't have to pay the same overhead that a burning horse does.
And, and that's the rub.
That's the rub, yeah.
Nobody wants some food truck sitting outside the front door of your, your restaurant, and, and maybe if you could center it toward students and Coker and the Booker School.
What they used to do in the hospital, you know, uh, you know.
It's actual place down on Carolina.
Yeah.
It's, it's coming, but you got to have a level of comfort with the business owners downtown.
But it's not something you're gonna do twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, we could designate a day or two a week, or.
Yeah.
Something like that, or, I'm just, I just think it's a choice, Steve, you got it, sure. But anyway, I knew you're gonna get fallout.
Well, I just, I wanted to explain that, you know, we, we did receive some comments, but, um, I'm gonna be speaking to the governors a little more, just get their thoughts and opinions on it, because, and the, the main thing they wanted to do is just, um, invite you guys to speak to them as well. Um, and I, I'll tell you who they are, kind of outside of this, you know, private, but, um, for their sake. Uh, but the idea is that, I think it's, it's worth looking into, what, what makes sense, what area, um, the locations you said are not going to be any other restaurants, you know, um, so, we'll see.
Okay, I wanted to let you all know, I was in Florence last month, having my oil change, uh, at Florence Toyota. And here's the picture of the, um, two food trucks that they had there. It's like, you know, Florence Toyota sits up on hill, on that back side of that lot, that's where they're set up at.
Okay.
And they had lines, um.
Whole corner.
Yeah, they, they had lines, and people know where they are.
Yep.
Um, and I don't think there is any hard feelings. Now, if you look at Roses, they, downtown, they're, they're gonna have a problem, I don't care what you say, but at Roses, you know, you don't have anything right there for them to compete with. People are going to food trucks that don't go to any of the other restaurants, they, they, they are going to the food truck, because that's what they like. They just have a food truck rodeo or something down at Beach.
Sure.
And so, um, being behind Roses, it gives them the ability to, to have a place set up, um, and they have this, I, I've seen them there on a Tuesday.
Sure.
And the people know when they're coming, so their customers are going to come, and they're not competing with any restaurant. Because when we had the Christmas celebration, um, I think it was Fast Foods or something like that, um, he comes. And when I went to buy something, he was out, I, I did get a, a steak sandwich, but he didn't have fries to go with it. But people that don't, they, they come just to experience the food truck, just like you go to the fair and get the, um, the fun takes.
Fry stickers.
Yeah.
Oh, or no.
Yeah, it, it's.
We, we think it's weird.
But, but we have to understand that that's the reality, it's just like going to a fair and eating carnival food, that's what the people want.
Well, that's why I wanted to kind of explore what's going on behind Fourth Street, that has happened organically. Um, now, there are, there are some things, like I said, Highway Fifty-Five, which is the, which is approved by Plan Commission, that's public now, that's gonna be on that corner where Roses is. Um, there is, we also are moving forward, Plan Commission on the other side. Um, there is, we also are moving forward, planning commission on the other side, with potentially other restaurants coming to that side. They're a mental health development. So there is, there is gonna be some competition down there, but if the owner is willing to keep them there, that might be the solution themselves, because it's already established. Uh, but it is a little far for the kids. Um, so I just wanted to, I wanted you to be aware of what we were getting. Um, now, you guys want me to do, or to prepare something on the site, it's, we own the property, just, I can do that. That's okay.
Well, it's not gonna hold, but so many anyway.
Right.
You know, and, um, anyway, just.
Yeah.
I know you got full plate, but just look into it.
We're, we're looking at it. It's on our agenda right now. We, I wanted you just to be aware of what's going on.
If nothing else, the workforce downtown, it gives them something within walking distance, you know, um.
When snow bikes used to come there, it was very popular. That one that used to come there was still paying. I do wonder about the ground. We'd have to figure that part out, but there would definitely be some things we have to think about.
Right, now, it did have, it did have payment, now it doesn't pay.
Right.
And, uh, but, I mean, that's, you know, this is part of it.
Yep.
So, okay. I will continue to look at that site. Uh, but just, like I said, I'm gonna be speaking to just a couple, the rest of people who want to get some kind of conversation about it before it. It just for me, so then, particular to you guys.
Yeah, I would like to hear from any interested downtown business owners, okay, where we go forward, okay, own the site.
Absolutely.
Give them an opportunity to, to weigh in.
And I think that would, that'd be wise.
And there is an ordinance in place about how close the food truck can go to.
Yeah, it's only a hundred feet, but I mean, it's, it's still, but I mean, I, I understand their concerns, so just wanted you guys to be aware of that.
And you'll be, you'll be, um, checking with the owner to see if he is going to still.
Cause now, I want, I, I'm, you know, the owner, I, I, I was under maybe the false assumption, maybe you don't have to leave soon, that because Highway Fifty-Five was coming, that was gonna push it out, but seeing the plans, there's still ample parking space back there. Um, and it's just, if he's gonna allow it, they're probably just gonna keep going there.
Yeah.
Um, so I would hate to, frankly, I would hate to invest the money in something that, if you build it, they might not come. Um, so that'd be, and then, you know, we're talking about public money, we can say that versus something that's happening without public money, so, you know. I like three things, so. Thank you for reminding me of this. I forgot to let you know, but that's all I have. I say that now.
We did make eleven, but we might make eleven thirty. Any other questions or comments for, for staff, for the public? Well, here you go, objection. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand. At your.